Just goes to show you, we all have our work to do.
Good evening. Welcome to the October 5th, 2016 Board of Education meeting. We've been in an executive session since 6:00 PM discussing a personnel matter. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have some participation in government students here tonight, pig students? Okay. Your requirement will be to stay till 9:00 o'clock. At that time, come up and we'll have sign-out sheets for you to sign. And if you have any forms that you need a board member to sign, we'll do that at that time. If the meeting gets over earlier, then you'll need to come up at that time. Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Christine Beck.
Charmaine Boudisinger.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Joanne Cunningham.
Michael Cooper.
And Judy Kehoe.
And Lynn Lenhart is not able to be with us due to a family illness tonight. Next is the Student Senate Report. Do we have approval of the minutes of the September 21st Regal Board Meeting?
Sub move.
Second.
Okay, that's a first and a second. And also the minutes of the September 29th Special Board Meeting?
Sub move.
First and second.
Any discussion on either one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Student Senate, do we have a Student Senate rep tonight? Great.
Hi, I'm Maggie Ball and I'm co-president of Student Senate. Olivia Miranda, Secretary of Student Senate. So, last week, we finished our freshman elections and we actually have eight new members this year because there was a three-way tie for last place. So, in homeroom, we had breakfast, like welcoming them and just like discussed what we do on Senate and how our meetings run. And we had a meeting today and basically, we just discussed our leadership conference again that's taking place at the Capitol in November. And we've so far secured six speakers for our panel, including Mr. Vail, the FBI Special Agent, Judge McDonough, Mr. Hartunian, and a couple others to speak about like their roles in leadership. And we also today started forming smaller committees just to do things like tours of the Capitol and overall just organizing the day. We also have a sponsor who has offered to pay for our meals and we're currently looking for more to help out with the gifts that we have to give the speakers and the favors for all the students coming. And we also plan on contacting like news stations for media coverage of the day. And we also reached out for the keynote presentation, which is taking place in the Senate Chamber. We contacted the different senators that represent suburban council schools and we're waiting to hear back from them, as well as drafting letters to the Senate's just explaining our expectations for them being in the Senate Chamber and dress code. And that's the majority of what our meetings have been and will continue to take place until November.
Anyone have any questions?
How many students are you expecting?
Around 200.
So, I have a question because we were talking as part of the Audit Committee, there seems to be quite a bit of funds in the Student Senate account. Is it, can we not use those funds for those items that you're looking for donations for?
Yeah, we have like built up the money for this, so we like plan on using that if we need to. And then afterwards, if we have money left over, then we plan on like figuring out what to do with it after then. But like basically, we've been building it up just in case. And so, if we can't find other sponsors, then that's fine, but yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question actually for Mrs. Kehoe. Is there any paperwork they need to complete in terms of sponsorship and donations like that or?
The clubs handle this work independently. They have their advisors who are making sure that everything is done according to the school policies.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I think this was really nice that you brought a variety of officers since the beginning of the school year, so we appreciate when you have somebody who comes and represents the student body, so thank you.
It sounds like you guys have been very busy, which is good.
Yes.
Thank you for the report. Okay, next is the Superintendent's Report. And before we begin, that part of the report is going to be accepting a donation from the Slonelands Brownie Group. So, can I have a motion to amend the agenda so that we could act on Item 8.3 after Jody does her report?
Sub move.
First and second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, President Downey. A few things. If you recall, several years ago, we eliminated the school breakfast program at the elementary schools because of lack of interest. There were some funding concerns and we've had some discussions with our principals and Food Service Director Lisa Eizer, and we believe there is a need to reconsider having a breakfast program at the elementary schools. So therefore, we're working, we're in the process currently of reapplying for that program. We believe we can do it with no cost to the district. We'll get some reimbursement and it will open up options for our elementary students. We've figured out how we can make that work. It would still be a very limited number of students probably participating, but for those students who need it, we think it's worth considering. So, we'll likely be bringing that to the Board for action at an upcoming meeting because you will have to approve that and we'll get you more information about that. Also, Judy, Greg, and myself, we presented the Capitol Project Overview, both on September 22nd and October 3rd at the Town Library. We had three people attend the September 22nd meeting, so not a large turnout, but we did have a very large turnout, which was part of the Progress Club meeting the other day. And we received some good feedback and I think that we got information out to groups of people who don't typically come to our Board meetings, so that was good. I'd also like to congratulate six of our high school students who have been named semifinalists in the 2017 National Merit Scholarship Competition. Some of our seniors, Wen Yuan Ho, Christopher Redman, Nicholas Shell, Richard Sweeney, and Lee Chan Zhu, and Molly Brown, were all chosen as members of the nationwide pool of 16,000 semifinalists. That group accounts for less than 1% of high school seniors in the U.S. The students earn the recognition based on their performance on the Preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship test out of 1.6 million juniors from more than 22,000 high schools. Like to congratulate all of these students for their qualifications as National Merit Scholarship finalists. And next, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Heidi Bonnequist to introduce some of her students for their hard work and their donations to the district.
Wonderful. Girls, why don't you join me right up here? Is this a good place for them to stand right here? Good evening. I have with me tonight a group of now sixth graders who represent two Girl Scouts Troops, 1254 and 1209. They're now sixth graders at the middle school, but last spring, they came to me with a proposal to do a service project and put in a buddy bench at Slonelands. And they did an excellent job with the proposal. They're working towards their Bronze Award, which they are all wearing this evening. And they'd like to talk to you about their proposal, what they did, and show a short video to explain how the Buddy Bench works. I'm going to turn it over to Abby.
Good evening. We are Girl Scouts from Troops 1254 and 1209. Our troops have worked together to make and install a Buddy Bench at the playground at Slonelands School. With an exception of one scout in our troops, all of us have attended Slonelands School and know what a special place it is. This year, as we have moved on to the middle school, we carried the school motto, "Always our best with us." We wanted to leave something behind that would make our great school even better. We did this project as part of our earning our Girl Scout Bronze Award. The Bronze Award is the highest award that can be earned by a junior Girl Scout. One of the guidelines for the project is sustainability, that the project lasts long after our participation ends. We needed to design a project that took on a life of its own. Our Buddy Bench project adds a visible way for the students of Slonelands School to stand up to bullying and to support students who might be new or just having friend issues and need someone new to play with. It is eye-catching and inviting and centrally located near the playground.
In addition to donating the bench, we have designed and attached the sign on the bench. We have created a brochure describing how to use the bench and will be providing copies of the brochure to the school psychologist, Ms. Pelagi, and to our principal, Mrs. Bonnequist. We have also taught a younger Girl Scout Daisy troop, all of whose members currently attend Slonelands, a Buddy Bench song.
Finally, we wrote and filmed a video that we hope will be used to teach the current Slonelands students about how to use the Buddy Bench. We have it here tonight to show you now.
Children who did not have anyone to play with would sit on the bench and other children would invite them to play, so no one was left out. He brought the idea back to his school in Ohio. Here are a few situations in which you should use the Buddy Bench.
That girl sitting on the Buddy Bench over there?
Yeah, she was sitting there yesterday during recess also. I think we should go over there and ask her if she wants to come play with us on the monkey bars. She looks really sad.
Sure, come on.
Hey, do you want to come play with us? We're going to go play on the monkey bars.
Sure.
This is gonna be fun. Wow, this is a really big school. The playground is much larger than my last school. I wonder if I'll ever find anyone to play with. Hey, I remember my teacher saying something about a Buddy Bench. Maybe I should go get that one.
Hey, I think that's a new girl that just moved here. Maybe we should go talk to her.
Hi, I'm Emily. Do you want to play with us? There are two open, there are three open swings.
Sure, I'm coming.
Let's go. What do you want to do for recess today?
Um, nothing, I guess. I promised Sarah that I would play with her at recess, so I can't really play with you.
Why can't we all play together?
That's the thing. She doesn't really want to play with you today.
Hey Maya, there are two swings. Do you want to go get them before anyone else takes them?
Okay.
Sorry. Great. Now we have no one to play with and nothing to do. Wait, there's a new Buddy Bench on the playground. Maybe I should try that. Are you okay? You look really sad.
Yeah, you look really lonely.
Do you want to come jump rope with us? We need another person to do a third-person jump rope.
Sure, that sounds like fun.
We are Girl Scout Troops 1254 and 1209. We designed our Buddy Bench as part of our Bronze Award project. We are excited to have the Buddy Bench added to the Slonelands School playground. Our hope is that the bench will help kids make new friends and will make our school We are excited to have the Buddy Bench added to the Slonelands School playground and our hope is that the Buddy Bench will keep, will help kids make friends and make our alma mater an even more special place.
Thank you very much for making time for us to share our Bronze Award project with you tonight.
Girls, can we get a picture with you up here?
And we normally have eagle pins. Unfortunately, they're not here tonight, but we'll make sure you guys get an eagle pin. All right. from the Brownies?
Sub move.
First and second. Any discussion? I'd just like, thank you, girls. It's phenomenal. Great. Keep up the good work. Keep making us proud. Appreciate it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Okay. Moving on, the Board of Education report. Who'd like to begin tonight? Anyone? I know I have a few things. Well, sorry. I know since the last time we met, Slonelands had its 75th anniversary and it was a phenomenal day there. The community came out, the alumni from the school. You could just tell the enthusiasm that was there. Ms. Monroe was there. And Lynn Lenhart got to speak as one of the participants in the program that day. Her husband was due to speak but wasn't able to be there. She spoke about how he had been alumni there and one of his teachers actually was one of the speakers that day. And that their two children went to Slonelands also. And so, we congratulate Slonelands on its 75th anniversary and wish them another 75. Also, we had the homecoming football game and the induction of the B.C. Alumni Hall of Fame. There were five recipients this year, ranging from I think the class of 86 down to 65, class of 65, a wide range of alumni, and the five that were inducted, and they make us very proud, so.
I couldn't make it to the homecoming induction. I was at the Lab School Welcome Back Picnic for the year and it was nicely attended by the new students this year, the freshmen, and there was a lot of returning juniors, seniors, and sophomores. And it was a nice event. They welcomed the freshmen. It's a nice get-together and it was a good event.
Oh, well, I think that's on, the other item we have, and I don't know if anyone, I personally didn't have a chance to look at it, but one of the items we have is tonight to nominate our delegate for the NISBA statewide conference. And part of their process is they vote on proposals that are put before the committee. I didn't know if anyone had any, wanted to discuss any of the specific proposals or would we just expect that, I believe it will be Lynn will be our delegate, to support them as they are. If anyone disagreed with any of the stance.
Is there a deadline for us to provide feedback or is it?
Well, the conference isn't till the end, I guess. I don't know if we'll meet again before the, yeah, we will. We'll meet one more time. So maybe, maybe the next meeting, if anyone, if we could all have a chance to look at it and then come prepared to discuss it, and if we disagree or we want Lynn to vote a certain way, then we'll make that known to her. Next item is the recognition of visitors at this time, oh no, we have presentations today, sorry. Skipping right over that.
Don't guess what.
Our first presentation is the audit, annual audit tonight, so.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we have our auditor here to talk to you about the audit. In keeping though, before we get to Heather speaking to us, we wanted to remind everybody, of course, how this particular presentation relates to the goals that have been adopted by the Board and its mission overall. The audit effectively provides accountability to the community and ultimately, the assurance that all taxpayer resources are being well-managed. So, that is part of the value component of the district's mission. And we'll have a full update for you from both Heather Lewis of Marvin &amp; Company, who was the lead partner on the engagement, and Chris Healy as well, was also part of the managing staff of the audit engagement. We'll have them, or Heather, give a quick update initially on the audit and then following that, I'll go into some of the specifics of how we did on our revenues and our expenditures for both the General Fund and the Food Service Fund. Heather?
So, I'm Heather Lewis. As Judy said, I'm a partner with Marvin &amp; Company, responsible for your engagement. And we did your audit for the June 30, 2016 financial statement. We've had a meeting with the Audit Committee and went through the audited financial statements in detail. You know, went through basically almost every page. But overall, you engaged us to give a report on your financial statements. As part of our audit process, we consider the internal controls in place at the audit at the district. We test some of your internal controls. We're not responsible for giving an opinion on it, but we do give a report on the financial statements. And we believe the statements are materially correct and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, we feel that it's a, you know, there are no material misstatements. It's a clean opinion, you know, highest level of assurance that we can provide. As far as your internal controls, we consider your internal controls as part of the process. We did not have any findings to report, so we had no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses, nothing that we felt needed to be brought to your attention. We also, because you receive over 750,000 in federal awards, we also have to consider compliance with major federal programs. We did that work. We did not have any findings in that area either. So, it was overall a very clean report, clean opinion. We also are required to audit your extra classroom activity funds. Again, that's a cash basis audit, so there's not a lot of additional work for that. You know, you test cash balances, test the information coming in and out of the clubs. We believe that those statements are fairly stated as well. We did have a management letter and that has been discussed with the Audit Committee. You know, minor, minor things typical to what you see in the extra classroom activity funds at pretty much every district that we work with. So, very normal findings. And then there's another letter where we're required to have just required communication with the Board. That's all very standard language. It lets you know that there were no significant changes in accounting policies that the district entered into. There were no weird estimates within the financial statements. We did not have any misstatements. We didn't, you know, suggest any changes to the numbers that we were given by the district. We audited them and felt that they were correct. And there were no disagreements and, you know, management was truthful and accurate. So, overall, a very clean audit, especially for our first year as your external auditors. We did not have any, you know, major issues or anything, so it was a very good audit. Any questions?
How many days, how many days were you engaged here at the district?
So, for preliminary work, we are here about three days. And then for final field work, we are here for a week. And it was typically three staff on site the whole time and then I was here for a few of the days as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Presentation. I guess I would maybe just, the Audit Committee was satisfied and everything with?
Yes.
And then we have a committee that has already had a presentation by, in committee, presentation by Heather and Judy, Judy rather.
Before you do your overview, could you just explain for the students and people in the audience, why we have, I mean, is this a required thing? Just explain what an audit is and why we have it.
School districts are required to have an annual independent audit and the reports need to be completed and submitted to both the State Education Department and the Office of the State Comptroller by October 15th. And again, there's a lot of taxpayer resources devoted to the support of the school, so again, it's part of the accountability that we're doing, what we're supposed to be doing with those assets.
Thank you.
Okay. So, you ask, how did we actually do? What do the numbers tell you in this 82-page report that you will be able to see up on the district's webpage? This is really just a quick recap for you. In some ways, it might feel like old news to you because we've already kind of moved on and we're well into the 16, 17 school year. But for 2015-16, on the expenditure side, we came in under budget by about $2.4 million, which is a relatively small percent. We had discussed that at the Audit Committee, that ideally, obviously, you cannot go over the approved budget of $94.1 million. So, you would try to come in under and as long as you're in about the 3% to 5% range, that's really an indication that you've budgeted conservatively and appropriately. So, the actual increase from one year to the next on the expenditures was 2.45%. The increases in general support, a large component of that change related to some of the special project work that had been done by O&M. It was interesting, when we were at the Facility Forum, one of the questions was, well, what are you doing with your own staff to maintain the facilities? And this is just one of those examples where Greg Nolte and his staff have funds within their budget where they do quite a sizable amount of work to maintain the facilities of the district. The other increases are, as you would expect, the instructional program, all in line with the budget. That's a combination of both staffing increases and also some increases in services to the students. Whenever you have the direct services to the students, while there's an uptick in the expenditures, remember that because these are expense-based aids, you're going to see the state aid flowing into the district in the subsequent year for that as well. Employee benefits was, of course, a big story for this past fiscal year because of the rate reductions that we saw from both TRS and ERS. The TRS rates had gone down almost 4.25% and the ERS rates were down close to 2%. So, applied to $30 million worth of payroll and $15 million worth of payroll resulted in the decrease on that line item. Some of the transfers out, the reason that increased was because we actually had some uncollectible amounts from the state relative to the summer extended school year program. So, when those get to be a certain number of years old without payment, our accounting practice is to write those off. We may see it in the future, but we don't want to reflect it in the audit reports as being a bird in the hand, if you will. So, we make those adjustments so that we being a bird in the hand, if you will, so we make those adjustments so that we fairly report, um, those balances. This just gives you a little bit more detail on the fringe benefits. Um, again, a very rare year when that number goes down, um, 4.2 percent overall. The health insurance went up very slightly, um, only 2.35 percent, and I wanted to flag that for you because, um, it was under the budgeted amounts by about $354,000, and that reflects, um, a growing number of retirees who are opting onto the Medicare Advantage plans, which are subsidized by the federal government, therefore saving us additional money. And we continue to have strong utilization of the health buyout, um, provision within our collective bargaining agreements. So while you might have an increase on the, um, salary side, because that gets reported as taxable income, we see the savings, um, that far surpass that buyout amount within that lower amount for health insurance. On the revenues, um, the school taxes went up, um, based on, um, the point four, five percent tax levy that we had in place the prior year. Um, you'll note the significant uptick in state and federal aid. Remember that that was really the first year that we had a pretty sizable increase, a partial increase in our gap elimination adjustment, and it was really from that increase in the aid that we were able to keep that tax levy at the point four, five percent amount. Again, this was slightly over budget, um, given that the budget was, uh, 94 million, that's pretty close. We were pleased with that as the result. Again, varied individual category, you know, from one to the next, um, but overall, our goal is to hit that grand total, so, um, pretty close. You'll also note, kind of extraordinarily, that, um, the revenues did increase at a rate faster than the expenditures. We were at a 3.07 percent increase on the revenues, um, versus only the 2.45 percent on the expenditures, and that is an anomaly. Um, you'll see it, um, for this past year, 15-16, and you will likely see it again next year, only because of the final elimination of that gap elimination adjustment. So it should level out, obviously, the goal is to have the revenues and expenditures growing at about the same rent, uh, rate, so that we can break even from one year to the next. The fund balance is, as you would, um, expect, we had the surplus of $2,850,000. That allowed us to increase the overall fund balance from the 12.04 million up to the 14.89 million. Um, the undesignated portion that's highlighted in gray is the amount that's required to be at or below four percent per state ed requirements, and, um, that 377 shows that we are in compliance with that element. The surplus was largely put into the capital reserve, which will be something that you'll be voting on later tonight as you consider approval of the project, the next capital project. The school lunch fund was fairly close to what we had projected. Um, we came in slightly higher on the revenues. Um, great news, um, breaking news, if you will, I just today, um, this afternoon, received the September sales totals for the food service fund, and the daily average was $5,300 and change, which is up from about $4,700 last year at that time. That's the highest average I've seen in September in a few years, so that is really promising, um, to see such a strong start. September is usually slower, and then as kids get back into the routine of school, it tends to, um, uptick a little bit, um, so that is positive news, and of course, we'll give you a full update on that, um, as the year progresses. And, um, on the expenditure side, we were a little bit over on the projection, that was largely, um, based on some of the, um, food inventory adjustments, um, at the end of the year. Um, we did end up with a, um, deficit for the year in the food service of about $52,000. Um, that was a little bit more than the 45 that we had projected. Um, we did, in fact, consume the amounts that had been transferred in there the prior year in anticipation of that loss, um, but with, um, a relatively small deficit of $2,000, um, and now with positive or strong numbers in September, again, we're hopeful that, um, the amount of that deficit will continue to shrink, um, in this coming fiscal year. And I could go on, but I won't. So, um, unless you have any, um, questions, that will conclude that report.
Yes, Charmaine?
Could, you, you said something about the extended year program at the beginning of your presentation?
Yes.
That we didn't, what, are we, are you implying, are you saying that we are not getting money that we are owed for that program, that we eventually have to write it off? Say that again, please.
The extended school year is the six-week program in the summertime, and we submit those claims to the state.
Yes.
And we are not always paid timely for those claims, so they age. Essentially, we're carrying it as an accounts receivable, and we see little amounts of payments coming in, um, but as those balances get older, the amounts of payments really start to decline. So, um, yeah, we do not, it, it's based on a percentage, they disallow some costs.
Okay.
And when we don't get them after a certain amount of time, we write them off.
Good, thank you.
And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't it also based on what the state appropriates each year to those old payments?
Yes, yes. So those are factors beyond our control, um, as with many things.
So there may not be funds there for SED to pay them to begin with?
Right.
That's why they're kind of holding them up and whatnot.
So we submit everything and hoped, I mean, in theory, we're supposed to have an 80% reimbursement of those program costs, and it never quite works out to be that amount, so.
And I know that has been an item we brought up when we are, um, speaking to our legislators at budget time, too.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we can move on to visitors. Uh, at this time, the board would recognize anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on, uh, agenda item? No? Okay. Uh, item number eight, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through two, and then four through 10. We've already approved number three.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention? That item carries. Item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through seven.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention? That item carries. Item number 10, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education appro, approve the following support staff action items, one through 11.
So moved.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention? That item carries. Item number 11, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three. Actually, it should be one through four, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That item carries.
Can, can I just go back? We just, I'm sorry, we're going, um, through, I just want to acknowledge, uh, I believe it's Ms. Mahmood who received the, one of the donations, I believe, is from the GE, GE Star Award, and just want to appreciate her for, I believe she was, um, part of the student who was nominated or accepted, uh, award, and she did also just acknowledge her for her, um, for receiving that, for her teaching, I believe.
Yep. And also, the Slingerland PTO, uh, I'm sorry, I should have acknowledged other donations, made a donation also, I believe it was for field trips, for the NMS benefits.
Yes, I didn't move before, sorry.
All right. Moving on, recognition of visitors. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? No? Okay. Future meetings, uh, we have a, the next Board of Education meeting is, or well, the next, is a policy committee meeting on Monday, October 17th, uh, at the Education Service Center, uh, here down the hall. Um, next is Wednesday, October 19th, is a regular Board of Education meeting, meeting, um, at 6:00 PM, executive session, 7:00 PM, regular board meeting. I will not be at that meeting, do it a personal commitment that night.
And, and I, I'm working out of state, so I will not be at that meeting either.
Uh, and then, uh, Tuesday, November 1st, the board is having a retreat starting at 5:00 PM, uh, in room B115. Then the next public, uh, meeting is Wednesday, November 2nd, um, 6:00 PM executive session, anticipated with a 7:00 PM public meeting, and then the next meeting after that is Wednesday, November 16th, again, 6:00 PM executive session with a 7:00 PM public meeting, and that meeting is being held at Hamill Grill, Emma Elementary School. Our bond vote is this, November 29th?
Yes.
November 29th, there will be a, uh, public vote on a bond proposal that we'll be sending out and, uh, making the community more aware of it. It's, it's all on our webpages, it, there's a link on the front page to all the information about the proposed bond. Um, we encourage everybody to educate themselves about it. Uh, any questions, feel free to reach out to the district administration, and we'll be sending a flyer notice out to the community to, to make them aware of what the bond consists of and everything. Anyone have anything else? Okay, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, and pig students, you got done early. Good meeting.